This is a public hearing. The first thing, I guess, was the pledge, the first thing on agenda at six o'clock, Nathan.
Yeah.
Evening, council members. You are here this evening to consider an application for assessed value deduction, in other words, a tax abatement. The Mammoth grazing lands Mammoth pasture solar project. subsidiaries of Doral, the parent company currently developing Mammoth solar project. Representatives of Doral project. Tax impact study. And from the public, we're deliberating determinations regarding the defermentary resolution pertaining to this class. You have three choices regarding this resolution once you have heard public comment and deliberated to your voice. Cable decision is not prepared to make a determination as a thing that has rejected. If adopted. As outlined in Resolution 2.11 of the defermentary resolution. If you adopt a resolution this evening. You will turn a window of up to 50 days in which to negotiate the terms of economic development agreement for this project with the applicant developer. Ralph fails to satisfy the county with the terms of the EDA. Council will have the right to rescind this resolution and deny this abatement. While partially satisfies the county. Then you'll have the right to amend the resolution to reduce the terms of the EDA pending a land with. If Doral fully satisfies the county, you'll have the right to authorize president to sign order grant to ask EDA. Coming into this meeting, I didn't have any information was to recommend that adopted. To negotiate. Based on the conversations I've had this afternoon, my decision is that you should probably hear comment tonight in your deliberations. And pause on the adoption of the resolution until you have gone through the negotiation process and add time to deliberate amongst yourselves further. We do not have the EDA ready because we do not have full access to legal counsel. Well, I could have taken the bottom rush document, so he's mostly changed it to reflect the numbers that might get negotiated. And on the county's attorney, that would have been the boundaries and I didn't put a net on the line like that. But I think. That there may be more work negotiated than I had initially expected. So you may not need much to commit. With the possibility of amendment to terms until those negotiations happen. And you have a number of ways in which that you can ask the EDA, the EDC to reconvene. You can convene yourselves publicly for our executive sessions, negotiate in an interview industrial prospect. Or you can establish an ad hoc committee, including maybe a couple of council members, me and a member of the EDC, a commissioner, however you sit. But I think that is probably the best prospect. Before I hand things over to Doral and Baker Tilly to talk about the project in the reports, I'd like to offer something of a staff report on my observations about this project eventually. As you've drawn here this evening, a lot of discussion in the community pertaining to tax abatement. Has reflected a significant amount of misunderstanding, misinformation, or hold. In general, criticisms of providing a tax abatement for this project have reflected two primary themes. Question of fairness and the adverse high-end consequences the county faces attributable to abatements. The latter is pretty easy to clear up. The few relatively minor exceptions. Capital fund, certain referendum operational. Property taxes in Indiana are subject to a levy base rather than rate-based structure. The exceptions noted. What this means in general is that a tax abatement does not deprive taxing units of revenue. Each unit has a levy. And the rate necessary to collect that amount is calculated based on the net assessed value, value of the tax. Yes. Case that without the taxes, adding all of this assessed value controls would increase our tax base. And lower tax rates for taxpayers. But it would not flood our treasury. But it left well. Each year, the levy grows by a set percentage. That percentage translates, for example, into $500,000. And the solar project would on paper generate $1 million in taxes. The county needs to generate a million dollars. They generate 500,000. And the taxpayers benefit. This, of course, is not bad. Able to lower taxes could reduce its future growth. It certainly makes existing problems happen. However, this is an oversimplification of the issue at hand. When a request abatement comes with a promise of economic development payments. Annual revenue outside of constraints applied to property taxes. That I have to note are not the same thing as payments and taxes. They are governed by different part of the command code. And payments made as an economic development consideration are not the same as a higher payment and are not subject to the same rules. Leave it 6.1, 6 dash 1.1 dash 10 something that governs pilots, whereas. Abatements are addressed elsewhere within that taxes. As we have known from discussions on previous projects to be used to subsidize operations, share with taxing units, reduce the unnecessary pay of construction work. Use crews or income tax. That's in community impact projects, as we've already seen with childcare project in Francisville or in April. Above. It's a further oversimplification in a case like this where the reclassification of weight increases assessed value. Reclassification of an estimated 5,265.6 acres for agricultural use to utilities will increase the assessed value of the county by nearly 60 million dollars. Meaning that even with the tax abatement in place, this project will ceteris paribus reduce property tax rates, especially in the counties where it is proposed. This is outlined in pages four through seven of Baker Tilly's tax impact study. And I'll let them address that matter a little bit later. This brings the second affirmation to the point. Fairness. How some businesses can come and ask for a tax break. While others are shut paying what they have. Councilman Ovram, I don't mean to pick on you, but you are a councilman who would also be on a fairly sizable farming operation. If you woke up tomorrow morning excited, you wanted to buy enough 160 acres of farm ground to add in your operation. Not the best ground in the county, not the worst, middle of the road, average. Approximately what do you think you would have? 10,000. So if I were the seller, he offered me $2,200, probably less. Twenty-five, pay twenty-six base value for agricultural land in Indiana is $2,120 acres. A little more than 20% of American value. Do you know what this is? It's a tax abatement. It's built into the law. No one has to submit an application, appear to public hearing, subject themselves to public criticism, submit annual compliance filings for promised job creation. Agricultural winner who has to keep the ground in agricultural production, whether it's coon operator or labor, make it an ongoing taxable group. No questions asked. My house has a gross assessed value of 183,200, which honestly is less than I could get even in Little Star County for a four-bed, three-bathroom with separate living and family rooms. Both a tiny room and an eating kitchen. At least if I ever power out of painting the site. I am paying taxes this year on a net assessed value of 84,500 dollars. That's 98,700 dollars for 53.876% or less if it's on paper value, say nothing of its true market value. Again, what is this? It's a tax abatement. I did have to file one time for my home state of minority purposes. But I don't have to go through this vertical to vertical rule. My house doesn't have to provide a point of origin. I just get a tax abatement every year. We can philosophize for hours on end whether built-in farmland abatements are necessary for lease carry. Even when the crop is being turned into ethanol or biodiesel, not actual commodities. Or about whether these residential reductions are appropriate for facilitating and achieving and attaining the American dream. But the bottom line is the same. Tax abatements are all around us. We just happen to make some property owners work a lot harder than others to receive them. We expect something in return for them for that. Having addressed these matters, I'll briefly discuss the project itself before we pass it to Tom. Doral intends to generate 945 nitro watts of electricity across as noted above. Just Shaya, 5,300 acres out of the total of nearly 8,800 feet. Project has an estimated first-year personal property assessed value of more than 500,000. Billings. In addition. To the 60 million increase in real property. In addition to the 60 million increase in real estate property. They expect to create about 20 jobs with an average wage in the ballpark of 70. And other than that, you've seen Dr. Mike Hicks' article that explains why and how tax abatements have lost their value in the wake of Senate in the. To our degree. I think Dr. Hicks is on the money and offers valuable insights that are worth considering in the future. Both in how the EDC and council evaluate each abatement request on a case-by-case basis. And in how you may want to revise the application rules. Application rules and scoring that we use to assess the abatements. Eleven, the two important factors Dr. puts, not concretely, these are. The use of economic development agreements in general and the relevant terms to which Doral or any other applicant may be willing to agree for a specific. Senate in hold act one has upended local government finances. Every piece of taxable personal property, any of you who have more than $80,000 of personal property in it. Is subject to annual depreciation with each item being classified under four or more depreciation pools in the state of Indiana. For the sake of simplicity, let's say I have a million-dollar machine with a taxable value of 10 years and there is a constant tax rate of 1%. But as further said, that is assessed according to Indiana's 4003 for depreciation. My depreciation schedule is my taxable value look like this. Year one, true tax value of 40% to 400,000 dollars. So I'm paying $4,000, $400,000, so I'd be 4,000 in taxes. Year two, for whatever reason goes back up, it appreciates 60% across. My taxes are 6,000 dollars. Year three, 55%, year four, 45%, year five, 57%, year six, 30%, year seven, 25%, year eight, 20%, year nine, 16%, year 10, 12%. So over the course of 10 years, I pay 32,000 dollars in taxes. Words that lay here early in May is, but wait, there's no one. Prior to the enactment of SCA one, as noted in Dr. Hicks's own. A 30% depreciation floor is in place. Regardless of what the on-paper depreciated true tax value of a piece of machinery was. A property owner is never allowed to pay taxes on less than 30% of the total cumulative cumulative cost of that personal property. So the adjusted schedule is the same for the first six years. Going on seven through 10, it stays at that $3,000 tax value that taxable at the end of year six. Meaning that I am not paying 38,700. That's not a substantial increase on such a small example, but it is a 20.9% increase. So on a million-dollar project, you do that, it is a substantial benefit to local government budgets and local taxpayers. That the Indiana General Assembly, Governor Ron, with infinite wisdom pulled away from this. You assume Baker Tilly's taxing tax. It estimates personal property taxation dates of about 120 billion dollars for 20 years within 100% of it. But it assumes the preservation of that 30% depreciation. Now that that is gone, Doral has no legal obligation to adhere to that 30% floor, has no incentive to. This is particularly problematic with the solar. Solar gen- and electrical generating equipment, so it's a different appreciation pool than those used by the state of Indiana for those businesses personally. The major's five-year double depreciation half-life, double depreciating half-life convention. With that, 30% floor on the face after year two or three, they don't pay taxes on 30% of the cost for the lifetime of its use. Now, they pay property taxes on the equipment for five years. In only two of those years, the taxes are even above that 30% floor. Which is in short, we say, if we don't give them the tax abatement. And get concessions in the form of economic development payments and/or other favorable terms for the county. They will pay 25 million dollars in taxes or so. And then be done. Instead of the 20-year abatement from the county, if that's the direction of this county, this whole concept to go. With economic development payments. They'll get a 15-year tax abatement from the state. And we won't get any other development. If. This legislation did not happen, probably now the legislature could realize that they screwed up and need to, which we don't know. Which is why I think more time is necessary for negotiations to hash things out and to prove it to the right. But if that doesn't change. They're going to pay 25 million dollars in taxes on the personal property and not pay any more. Whereas if they give them the tax break. We negotiate payments, we can stretch that out longer, analyze it, and we can try to negotiate a little bit more to account for NPB over a 5, 10, 20, 25. I will hand it over to Connor and right now, once you guys have the questions. Guys, want to go ahead and unmute yourselves? Can you hear me out there?
Yeah, I can hear you.
We can hear you. Hello.
Oh, that was great.
Go ahead and unmute now, again, please.
You guys hear me okay?
Hello.
Hello.
Hear us?
We try it again?
Hello.
Hello.
Hey, we can hear you.
Hey.
Try it again?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Hello.
Hello.
Yes.
Hello, somebody answer please.
Hello.
Hello.
We can hear you guys. I don't think.
I can hear you. I think it's on a bit of a delay on my end at least.
Yeah, there's a bit of a delay.
Yeah, yeah, I can. I'll call Connor and then and call you. Hey Greg, can you give me a call? Yeah, if you can hear me, I'm calling you now.
Yes, thank you. All right, we have Connor and Greg on the road. All right, um, how do you want them to do? Do you want them to walk through it or do you? Want to ask questions of them, council?
I suggest would be to have them kind of walk through the highlights of it.
All right, can you guys go ahead and kind of walk us through the highlights of your study?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I can kind of get started with that. Thank you. No, my name is Greg Balsana with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. Um, we serve, you know, as financial advisor for different municipalities and counties throughout the state. And so happy to be with you today. Thank you for having us. Connors with me on preparing economic impact study, but I'll kind of talk to you tax, uh, impact analysis. Again, happy to answer any questions. Um, following that during, if you have any. I'm sorry, I can start here. This is the analysis made in 10, 10 of 2025. Yeah, so.
How about we pause this and let Doral speak and then we can try and figure this out.
Okay.
And then you guys want to, you guys are up.
Good evening, council. My name is Kevin Parzik. I'm a senior vice president with Doral Renewables, representing the the project entity.
My name is Kevin Parzik.
Oh, it looks like it's muted, so I think broke. Let's go. Okay, so. There's been a lot of discussion about this abatement, but I do want to. Make sure that everybody understands an abatement is is actually Nathan laid out very well. This is a request for an abatement and an economic development agreement. I think the discussion that we have at this point is the need that both Doral and the county can achieve. Through this type of arrangement, which is. Stability and predictability in terms of cash flows for our company. And revenues for the county. Of course, when we look at the tax liability that we would incur, you know, if none of this was taking place. We see that as as a very, as a number that we can fit into our project budget. However, we would prefer something under an agreement whereby there's no, there's. No possibility of that number changing. It's more advantageous for us and our financial backers because we have certainty in terms of our costs. That's not to say that we're looking to skate out of any tax payments. We are looking to work with the county on coming up with a very favorable. Agreement that that's good for both the county and the project. We are not looking for any kind of handout or anything like that. We're looking to make honest payments for this project. I'm not quite sure which direction the council would like to go this evening in terms of any specifics. But I agree with Nathan's approach that, you know, if we can come to some sort of agreement, we can identify in a final form what that. Final economic development agreement and the funds associated with it would be. I'll let Chris have a couple of comments and then if you have questions.
Thank you. Good evening. So as Nathan presented, there's a couple of issues tonight. The first issue is the confirmation of economic revitalization area. We're not going to go into a bunch of detail. You're all very familiar with this. You've done this multiple times. But the reality is the land, as you all know, in row crop production and is currently undeveloped. It's experienced a lack of development and that's evidenced by the fact that it has not been developed. That land. And so your determination tonight that it is in fact, should be designated an ERA is supported by case law. That's been, that's been defended and that exists. So with that designation, we can move forward and then talk about the benefit. So the benefits of the project and posed use at the basic level has submitted in SB one or 20 jobs, like 4 million in salaries or some estimate. But there's also all the ancillary benefits. Baker Tilly provided an impact report. Oh, that was a net increase of tens of millions of dollars annually counting. So those benefits taken together into salary justify the determination that the ground is in need of, has experienced the lack of development. And that there are substantial benefits. Together with those two things, confirmation of the ERA and the vote for the abatement. Will allow us to enter into a period, discuss and finalize the terms of economic development agreement. As Kevin laid out, Nathan alluded, will allow us to present a win-win. Which the county will ultimately be better off than they would had we not done. If you'd like to enter, good faith.
Just one other item I want to clarify is that this this discussion is that the real property tax is not under consideration or that would be paid. In accordance with, you know, assessor requirements. This is all about the personal property tax and it is directly impacted by SB one's revision of the. Of the depreciation schedule this past summer. For personal property.
Right, so that real estate will experience a significant and five times increase in current assessed value. So what our proposal with the 100% abatement on personal property, no abatement on the real property. Is it provides a combination of benefits. Ultimately, we think it'll provide more revenue for the county while also providing immediate tax.
Jacob is our is our tax consultant. We don't have anything specific, but if you have questions for us or any of us, please feel free.
Jake. How much an acre does agriculture pay right now and then how much will solar pay in two years? Because I know I was, I talked to. Some of the people in charge of the conference I was at, you know, and it goes from 2% a farmer pays and. Utility pays 3% of assessed value or that's what they're getting at. They want to max the the rate out eventually. So could you just tell everybody on the council like what that would be per acre?
Sure. Is your question about the cap or about the assessed values of the of the ground?
The amount that would be paid that if it stayed farm ground, how much would it be paid? And then how much would it be after if it gets? And then how much would it be after, if it gets to the utility?
Yeah, so, so there's, there's two parts, I think, to the answer. One is you're correct. When it's, when the land uses is agriculture, row crop, which is now, obviously that land is capped at 2%. So even if the tax rate in those areas were above it, they would never pay more than two, right?
Well, and then I hear there's going to be a, it's not a homestead credit, but there's going to be a, a credit towards land, apartment buildings, rental houses. You know, like now you get so much off on a house homestead credit where they're going to knock that off at some maybe in effect in 2031 or 2027.
That's correct. So there's downward pressure on the taxes that homesteads will pay. There's also downward pressure on 2% multifamily residential, right? So all of those portions of your tax base, you know, broadly speaking, the changes that were made in SB one all create downward pressure, meaning that the tax, the tax revenues coming off of properties will certainly not go up. They will more, more than likely go down. So if you think about your tax base as a whole, there's downward pressure on all residential.
So what would that amount be on, say, farm ground in 2028 versus solar in 2028?
So the farm ground, yeah, so the farm ground is currently assessed in the neighborhood of $2,000 an acre. And once the, the area, you know, what we call inside the fence actively being used for power generation, there's state guidance that allows that underlying taxable value to go up in the neighborhood of $12,000 to $13,000. And that, that number tends to, the, the state DLGF issues guidance on what that utility, the taxable value of the land under the panels can be. The state update that updates those numbers every year and those tend to increase. So right now it's the $13,000 an acre, 13,700 per acre. And so in a couple of years, you know, you're probably north of $1,000 per acre compared to, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000 to 2,500 per acre for ag land. So that's why when they say there's.
So 14,000, it'd be 400 and 520 bucks an acre is what utility would be paying at 3%.
If you could max out to 3%.
If the levy.
If the levy allowed you to get.
Right.
That's what they're pushing to max the levies.
Yes.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if Plaski County will get their levy maxed, but every other, a lot of counties will be maxed. That's what they.
You're right. Even though those tax rates in those townships are lower now, one, because of all these changes, right, there will be pressure for those rates to rise. So to your point, as you cross two, start to see cap, cap losses. And if you ever do get over, you know, three, then, then you absolutely are seeing actual cap losses as well. So the ability for this to pay up to three versus, you know, being capped at two is, is in the long run advantageous for your tax base.
Can you explain how it used to be before Senate Bill one and how it is now with Senate Bill one regarding personal property and the depreciation schedule?
Sure.
And how it used to cap out at 30, the 30% floor and what it does to us now?
Yeah.
And also the part about the, if you're over $2 million in personal property, you no longer have to file. So the liabilities shift is different.
Yeah, there's a lot there. So let me start with the last, no, that's all right. Let me start the last part first. So you were pointing to things, the, the one you pointed to about the $2 million exemption on personal property really doesn't have anything to do with the project, right? But it does have to do with your overall tax base, the tax base of every county around the state, right? So I believe the number is, I, it's relatively low, maybe a couple hundred thousand. If you have that much personal property in your business, right, that could be a company that owns copying machines and desks and those kinds of things. There is a threshold at which you not have to file a, a tax return at all. You're just exempt, right? 80, is it 80? Yeah, so, yeah, right. I knew it was somewhere in the neighborhood 85. So, so to, prior to the Senate Bill one, if you had, you know, if you're running a small business and you have just a little bit of furniture, some IT equipment, you don't have to, you didn't have to file anything, right? The state did that to just take away the burden on small businesses and frankly, make it easier administratively for the county to not handle all of those filings every year for, you know, limited amounts of tax dollars. So the, the state put that $80,000 threshold in a few years ago. And then in the most recent change, they significantly upped that, right? So now you've got companies that may have a million and a million and a half dollars of taxable value or sorry, capital into equipment that is now going to be exempt, right? So it went from 80,000 to 2 million. So again, you know, if you aggregate that across the county, you know, you could be talking about dozen, maybe more business that that revenue, which has been part of your tax base is now kind of evaporated because of the requirement to report and pay tax on that. That answer that question? Yes, okay. My, what was your other question?
So can you talk about how?
Oh, the depreciation, yes. So.
The floor is gone.
So broadly speaking, prior to Senate Bill one, there was an overarching part of the law that said everything had a 30% floor, right? So no matter kind of what depreciation looked like or, or based on different ways you can file property taxes, what they call pools for your personal property or your equipment, even though those had schedules that dropped below 30%, the overarching rule was if you aggregate all of your capital investments, you're always going to be taxed at a minimum 30% of the value of investments. Senate Bill one removed that completely from, from the law effective with assets placed in service after July 1 of this year. Without getting too much into the nuance, what that means effectively as, you know, for, for lots of property, you will, you will in most cases dip down below the 30%. And then for certain types of assets like utility equipment, because of the way those filings are structured, there really is, there really is no minimum valuation. And so for utility property, the way the system in Indiana works is you use your federal depreciation. And if you all run a business, you know that the purpose of depreciation is you spread your cost out over time, but you're spreading out that cost and then you've exhausted the cost, right? So whether it's 10% every year for 10 years or whatever, ultimately you, you depreciate 100% of, of that asset and that value is then no longer on your books. Well, because that is the, the basis, right, Indiana's taxation of utility property relies on that, the way that federal depreciation works. With the removal of the floor by the legislature, there is no minimum taxable value of utility property.
Okay, so can you take that information that you just said?
Yes.
And explain how that applies to this abatement process? Because if we don't give an abatement, then the floor falls off after five years.
Correct.
So can you, do you want me to keep explaining or are you following where I'm going?
Now go, keep going.
Okay, so if we would do that, they would typically pay the 30%.
Right.
But that's gone now.
Correct.
So we use that revenue regardless.
Correct.
So the state took that away from us.
Correct.
So if we, so they're, they're not, regardless of a 20-year abatement, they're only paying five years of personal property on the panels. And then after that, it's gone.
That is the current, the way the law is written in black and white and the way everybody that I've consulted, including, including my own opinion, that is how everyone that I know believes in interpret.
So.
Because that's what it says. There is no floor.
So if we were to get an economic development payment that was greater than what they would pay over the course of the five years, which is what I'm assuming, so that makes sense. I mean, I'm not asking you for me. I'm saying that's.
Yes, I mean. Correct. From the company's perspective, right? If they look at current law and the way these, these assets would be reported under current law, there is a five-year liability.
I thought it was seven, but then I was corrected today. It's five.
Yeah, most of these assets, yeah, for federal depreciation purposes, most projects like this consistently, the five-year depreciation.
All right, I do have a question. I'll let you guys decide who's the best person to answer it. One of the things that's been asked quite a bit, when you, when you do, when you collect in tax revenue, that is collected every year, nobody can dispute it. Nobody can stop doing, start doing it. It's like, when you do an economic development agreement, there's thoughts that if the project sold or changes hands or whatever, the new owner, the old don't have abide by any agreements that are, that were put in place before. I have, I see that, you know, if that, maybe you can explain how that works. I believe it's 100% true that nobody ever talks about economic development.
Right.
Bad for everybody. A year later, you sold the business, we got nothing. So maybe you can explain how that works and how that's written into our contract to help protect the talent.
I'll let the, I'll let the lawyer address that in a second, but I do want to, the, the structure of the, of the corporation of the LLC is such that it, each of our projects has an individual LLC. That is a standalone corporation that has equity partners and debt associated with it. In other words, Doral Renewables, for whom I work, has an equity position or will, once the project goes operational in, whether it's Mammoth Central or Mammoth Grazing Lands, there will be an LLC and that will be the contract that is had with the county. Now, Doral may sell their interests, I mean, I, I, there are no plans, but one could say that the equity partners could sell their interests in that LLC. But that LLC remains the owners of the assets and the responsible parties for all the leases with our landowners and any obligations we make to the county.
And it's, it's also the recipient of the income from sale of power. That's the income side, which whole thing go around. With respect to the protections in the economic development agreement, Nathan mentioned, we don't have one yet. We're certainly open to discussing all of that in previous agreements. There's been restrictions on assignment that require the evidence of the financial security of the purchaser or the acquiring entity, right? So they have to have so much of a net worth and demonstrate an ability to operate. There's also other protections, potential security interests all in that, which are a requirement. So and to jump on Kevin's point, we also have our lenders and our partners and a non-payment of any of those obligations that's there, which they're going to step in and payment independent of anything we do, because they need to protect their investment. This 1.7 billion dollar project, fair and reasonable payment, not going to.
Acting there. Hey, can I interrupt them for a second? Greg or Connor, can you, can you try?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure that.
Can I answer one more thing on his question? I think you asked a good question and one thing I think the legislature has done a good job of, it allows bodies like this, when there is an active tax abatement, you guys get an annual review, which you know, right? So the CF one process, which comes for you every year. So I think to be concerned that somehow this abatement is ongoing and the EDA payments that were agreed are not being paid for any length of time, to me seems like it wouldn't, really couldn't happen because you guys would obviously not approve their annual compliance, which would then take, take the abatement off, off the table for that year. So to me, you have that ongoing check and balance to say, if you're holding up, you're into the bargain, so will we. But as soon as you're not, you know, you guys can essentially take the.
That brings up one very good point is that we, you know, we do a review abatement once a year and if anybody's not compliant, always have the right to change.
Correct.
The abatement. And so in essence, let's say for some crazy reason, it was defaulted on, then it would just fall back to the tax roll.
Correct.
Pay personal property tax at the rate that it, that it was established after five years.
Correct.
Does anybody else have more questions? It's time to ask them now. Does anybody else?
Yeah, I have another question. It's Jason.
Jacob.
Jacob, sorry. Can you say what your background is and where you work?
Yeah, sure. So Doral has asked me to, Doral has asked me to help them kind of navigate this whole property tax discussion. So I've been in economic development about 15 years. The last six years, I've spent most of my time living in, in the property tax realm. I mean, I do other types of work as well, but helping companies kind of figure out how to partner with a public-private partnership, right? And, and when we're talking about capital investment, whether it's here in Indiana or somewhere else in the country, we're generally talking about property tax. So broadly, I do a lot of economic development type consulting with people that are making capital investments, but majority of my work tends to tie back to property taxes. I live here in Indiana. My firm is called, the firm that I'm the founder and CEO of is called Course of Strategy. And I spent most of my career here in Indiana. And in helping me with this analysis, I also partnered with a firm called Deshaun McMillan and Associates. They're a large national firm that has property tax expertise as well. So we've been trying to help Doral make sure that they have a, a clear picture of kind of what is going on with, you know, if, if, if you set aside SB one projects like this, there's a level of complexity to them. Once you add in all the changes that just, you know, hit us all, you know, five, six months ago, right? It becomes even more complicated. So that's the role I'm playing, trying to use my background and expertise, both from the private sector side, understanding how these projects work, but also from public sector side, kind of knowing how our property taxes work and how government budgets all come together. Trying to help everybody get a clear picture of what's.
Okay, and then my other question would be, can you explain what the advantage of? I think there's some confusion as far as when you say an abatement and have a derogatory response.
Okay.
So, but the catch is, I shouldn't say catch, but the flip side of it is we're getting an economic development payment. And so can you explain kind of how that works?
Yeah, so I'm actually a local elected official, official in the town I live in. And so if I had a project like this, I would be keenly interested in economic development payments because one, they're extremely flexible. The, the, the other reason, the bigger reason to me is as local elected officials, trying to make these budgets work, which we all know is really, really hard, our ability to have access to basic dollars that kind of make ends meet is becoming harder and harder, right? So economic development dollars are truly new and additional dollars on top of your ability to raise revenue. Traditional sources are primarily property tax, income tax, and then obviously the county receives other things. Bees and all that kind of stuff, but primarily property tax and income tax. So your ability to take those kind of standard avenues to revenue, which are harder and harder to come by and layer on this extra layer of truly additional dollars, what an EDA payment is, right? It's not part of the property tax process. It sits on top of all that. It's extra new dollars. There are very few ways in Indiana and in most parts of the country as a local government generate really new revenue. That's what I think. If I was in your shoes, that, that would be the most attractive part of the EDA. Was the ability to grow the resource.
I do have another question. Got to touch on something there that maybe you can explain a little bit more in depth is, you know, when, when they did SB one and they, and it happened back when they did one, two, three percent, you know, back in the day. You know, the thought was, it was based off of Hamilton County, Allen County, Lake Porter, where they had a high population rate. And so lower the property tax, everybody hears property tax. Sorry if you people think, not as many people think in depth about income tax because it's smaller. It comes out every week a little bit at a time. It doesn't, doesn't hit the pocketbook as hard. So anyhow, when they, when they make these changes down at the state level, they think about these big counties and one of the things they give you in a large county is you can make it up in income tax. We changed the rules for income tax, so you can make it up there. But in a rural county, that impacts us much differently because we have a much smaller population, a lot of times more retired population, income is much less. So maybe you can just take a second to kind of tap on how, you know, how this, you know, how that change affects a rural county and, you know, like I said, once again, the EDA payment is a way to capture that because we can't capture income tax, things of that nature. to capture that, because we can't capture income tax, things of that nature.
My general comment is, you are correct. I would share your assessment that, especially in the last session, SB1, there is absolutely intended shift of replacing some of the property tax dollars, income tax dollars, that is absolutely visible in the language. The other thing I would say, I mean, if you kind of take, even step back further, take all the, I call it downward pressure, right? There's everything in the bill is creating, making it harder and harder for property tax. 2%, multifamily property, 1% instead, 3% personal property, right? That's all has downward pressure. There's been calls for some time, which I'm not projecting that I know anything, anybody else doesn't. There have been that would like to get rid of personal property taxes altogether, right? So, I mean, you've got all these kind of macro issues that unfortunately, for local elected officials trying to make budget work, budgets work, you have all this downward pressure on primaries for revenue. I think connecting the dots back to this project, again, that that ability to not only capture that revenue, but as was mentioned, kind of provide that stability for, you know, think for time, show those dollars, kind of what, even if that downward pressure on your actual taxes continues to go further and further down, you've got a stable, predictable revenue for this project. That answer?
Yeah.
Got to go first. You guys do some projects just to.
Doral is focused in the United States. Our largest project is up in Stark County, it's 400 megawatts operating. About 6,000 acres. I would, I mean, we, we don't necessarily have a position as to what percentage a county would like to have with respect to solar. It really varies, you know, so much of it varies on the nature of the county, the availability of land, but most importantly, how many, you know, what landowners, you know, are interested in doing with their land. So, you know, we work with landowners, every piece of land that we are operating on, both in Stark and our current project in Blaski County and our, this potential project, are all agreements with private landowners. And they are making a decision as to how to utilize their land. So we don't have a position on some sort of percentage that is correct for the county. We just work within the rules and regs of the counties. No, that, you're saying 50% of the population wants to do it?
Plant mass.
It, it, it's what makes sense. It's pretty rare that you'd see 50% of the land in a county that would go towards solar, but that's a decision that is made at a zoning level and, you know.
Anybody else have any questions for Doral? Well, we'll do Baker Tilly now, we might have some more after them. Thank you.
Connor, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you guys.
Okay, I think it's your turn. You guys are up.
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to kind of get started. This is Greg Bossano and Connor with Baker Tilly. Thank you for. Yeah, thank you for your guys' patience. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, that's a little better.
Thank you for your guys' patience here. So, you know, we work with Baker Tilly Financial Advisors for various counties and municipalities across the state of Indiana. So thank you for having us here. Just want to kind of say, start, you know, we were listening in, there was a few questions, just I can maybe touch on a bit. One of those was related to the, the new kind of deductions and such with the 2% properties. So those farmland, agricultural, rental, residential, homestead, rental homestead properties, things along that nature. They do, will receive a new deduction under SEA1, so I think it was mentioned. And that ranges from 6% up to 33.4%. So it's phased in from 2026 to 2031. It kind of goes up by roughly 6% per year. Additionally, you know, as we talked about, you guys talked about homestead properties will receive new credits and deductions through SEA1 that are phased in. And then I think there was a second question, you know, related to about the cap. So those properties are a 2% cap, meaning that the most of those properties can pay are 2% of their gross assessed value. And with solar property, the cap changes to 3%. So the most taxes that those properties can pay is 3% of their gross assessed value. So there is a change there in the maximum amount, the ability to pay with the change in property type on the land. Another question I think was asked about the personal property changes with SEA1. And the, you know, it was already mentioned that the floor, kind of the changes, I won't go into that, because that was all sounds like, you know, you guys already talked through. The de minimis is also mentioned, and that is correct, that it is $80,000 of property. If you own less than that, you do not pay personal property taxes for this year and next year. In 2027, taxes payable '27 is when that will flip to the $2 million. So between $80,000 and $2 million, if you own property between those buckets, you're currently paying property taxes and will for, personal property taxes and will for '26. But starting in '27, you will not under Senate Enrolled Act 1. So just sort of a comment on a few of those items, I think that were touched on. And then with that, I'm happy to kind of go into our analysis. I prepared, helped prepare the tax analysis dated September 10th. And I know Connor can speak on the economic impact study after that. And again, happy to answer questions along the way here. So, you know, Nathan kind of started, it sounded like with a summary of how Indiana property tax system kind of operates. And it's been mentioned, I think, by the company and their representatives, most of the funds in the state of Indiana are driven by the levy, meaning that the state sets how much your levies can grow. It's been roughly 4% this year and the last few years, meaning that as your levy grows, what is really the driver is assessed value for tax rates. So the higher the assessed value is, the lower the tax rate that's needed to support that levy and vice versa. And so there's a few ways to go outside of that levy, that's through bonds. And then there's some other funds that Nathan mentioned, like the Capital Development, Cube Capital Development Fund. But a majority of funds, again, are within that set maximum levy that the state provides guidance on. And so when new assessed value is pumped into a community, again, really, one of the benefits of that is a reduction in tax rates. And so the reduction in tax rates can obviously help taxpayers pay less on their property. In addition, it could help circuit breaker credits be decreased from that reduction. And then those few funds that I mentioned can help increase revenue, like the Cube Capital Development Fund that Nathan mentioned. And it was already mentioned, the economic development payments, on the flip side of that, those represent new dollars available to spend. And what we've heard from attorneys is those typically can be spent for really any legal purpose that the county chooses to do with and how they write up their agreements. So again, property taxes paid are not necessarily new dollars to the county and the overlapping tax units, rather an increase in assessed value that lowers tax rates. They, kind of the company pays a portion of the pie and everyone else pays a little bit less, because they're now paying a portion. So with that, kind of the analysis that, again, dated September 10th, kind of looking at page two of that, looking at the estimated assessed value from the project. And so this is investment here is 1.6 billion of taxable investment with about 5,265 or so acres within the fence, meaning that those would be increased from the $2,120 ag rate for 2026 up to the current solar land base rate is set at $13,700 for the north district. And so that increase leads to a $60.1 million of assessed value increase. The utility property, real property improvements, you can see listed there, the utility property being depreciated, as was discussed, down to the 30% floor, which is what we were provided to kind of use at the moment, is that 30% floor still. And you can see there that that investment ranges from 512 million, like 512.2 million of assessed value down to that 30% floor, 480.2 million.
Hey, we gotta, we gotta recess this meeting and go to our budget hearing, because it's advertised at seven.
Just hold tight for a second.
Yeah. We need to go through that, it's a kind of messed up deal. So we'll, we'll, we'll start our budget hearing now, and then we're going to recess our budget hearing and go back to this one. Is that the way you said it would work? I recessed the budget hearing, went to the abatement, now I'm going to, or went to the budget, now I'm going to recess. That's legal, right? The county recesses it and convenes it after this one? It started, kind of dirty, but. Okay, that's legal though, right? I read Robert Rule's order. All right, so we opened it. Now we'll recess it until this meeting's over. Okay, now we're going to reconvene the, the public hearing for the tax abatement. So go ahead, Baker Tilly.
Sure. So what I was mentioning is the assessed value, so you can see there in year one, a total assessed value estimate of 574.8 million. And then after the kind of appreciation of the floor hits, that 542.8 million in year three and beyond. We did look at a 20-year, 100% utility or personal property abatement. You can see there, that means that that assessed value is zero for the first 20 years, leaving 62.5 million dollars or so of assessed value that's not related to that personal property. One thing in Indiana is the increase in land assessed value cannot be abated. So just that kind of real property improvements and personal property itself can be abated, not the increase in land itself. So with that, you can see that for the first 20 years, it would be 62.5 million or so. And then after the abatement expires, assuming the project is still assessed, it would go up to that 542.8 million. We can certainly look at different types of abatement structures. Generally speaking, you know, more abatement typically means that you're delaying kind of that tax rate relief that we'll get into. And more abatement typically means a resulted higher economic development payment in certain cases. But again, hybrid abatements can be done, different abatements can be done. This analysis looks at, you know, what it looks like under no abatement versus a 20-year, 100% utility property abatement. Additionally, this kind of analysis kind of isolates the impact of this investment, showing, you know, what 2025 looks like with the incorporation of this assessed value. To kind of show the true impact of this project. The next, the next page, page three of that analysis, looks at the breakout between taxing district. And there's a handful of different taxing districts this is a part of. So the Franklin Township, Jefferson Township, Monroe Township, and Rich Grove Township taxing districts. Part of the investment could also be, as we continue to work through this, located in the Jefferson Township East taxing district as well. So if that, if that is true, we would update this analysis, and as in part of that investment could be located there. This analysis shows 56% in Franklin Township, 20% in Jefferson Township, 13% in Monroe Township, and 11% in Rich Grove Township. And you can see those breakouts of assessed value accordingly there. Page, page four shows what would happen with the tax rates, again, holding all else constant. So as I mentioned at the beginning, an influx of assessed value typically leads to a decrease in tax rates, holding all else constant. And so for example, in the Franklin Township taxing district, without an abatement, and once everything hits kind of that 30% floor here, the current tax rate there is 1.2010. With the incorporation of this assessed value, that rate could decrease to .7870 or a decrease of about .4140, 41 cents. Even with a property tax abatement, you would still see the influx of assessed value from the increase in land and real property improvements. And that would lead to a tax rate, you can see, at 1.1273. So still a decrease of .0737 cents. And that's during the course of abatement, again, because there's still that increase in land assessed value and the smaller amount from the real property improvements.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
It's with the, when you're saying all these numbers, is this with the idea that there's the 30% floor?
That is correct, this is.
Okay, but that doesn't exist anymore.
Well, I think you are right that with Senate Enrolled Act 1, the 30% floor doesn't exist any longer.
Technically, this is not 100% accurate.
The bottom miller just, bottom of the right columns of the 20-year, if you just, that 1.1273 would continue as opposed to the 1.777.
I know, I just want to clarify.
Correct, and we were writing the information, you know, again, this analysis is based on 30% floor. So if that wasn't chosen, that's what we were kind of provided is the assumption to use for this analysis, that it would stay at the 30% floor. So again, that is not true. If it would be depreciated down, I think it sounded like someone had mentioned, instead of .7870, it is correct that that would go to 1.1273 instead, because that personal property, utility property would not be, would not come on the tax rolls. And so looking at, you know, page five, page five just kind of shows those tax rate impacts by specific entity. So what I mean by that is the county, the schools, the different townships, et cetera. So for example, during the course of the abatement, the county's tax rate could go from .4812 to .4598, a decrease of .0214 cents during the course of the abatement. And again, that is due to the increase in land and real property improvements. Pages six and seven, the impact to the taxpayer in one of these taxing districts, where they're located, where the project is located, what kind of reductions in taxes they can see. So for example, on page six, I'll just kind of look at during the course of the abatement, a median homeowner of $134,600 can see a reduction in taxes of $29.73 annually. This looks at taxes, you know, with the SEA1 impact, full impacts versus those same taxes, but with the incorporation of this investment. So if you own one acre of farmland, your taxes could go down a dollar and four cents per acre. $100,000 business in that Franklin Township taxing district could see a reduction of $73.70. So again, that's just, and we also list the kind of different tax, tax rate impacts for the different taxing districts located with this project. And page seven looks at the impacts after the course of the abatement. Again, as was mentioned, this assumes that the 30% floor is maintained. So if that wasn't the case, then it would be those values that were shown on the prior page. Page eight does look at and highlight that County Cumulative Capital Development Fund. So currently, this is a fund that is able to exist outside of the state's maximum levy, currently generating $206,249. With the influx of the assessed value from the increase in land and real property improvements, that fund could see an increase of 200, to increase up to $216,199. And that, so over the course of a 20-year abatement, that fund could see an additional about $199,000 cumulatively over those 20 years. And then again, after the abatement, would see a significant increase if that 30% floor is maintained. Pages nine through, through 13, look at the estimated property taxes that this project would pay. With page 13, looking at the totals, so I'll just kind of stick to that page. So without, without the abatement, we kind of, again, looking at this, assuming the 30% floor is still in place. And over 21 years, so the 20-year abatement period plus one year, be looking at taxes of about $142.1 million versus with the proposed abatement, 21.8, 21.8 million, or a savings of about $120.3 million. And so that would be property.
30% floor too, right? That's a 30. No, that's savings we just talked about. No, that's savings we just talked about. But that's if there's a thirty percent floor in place, correct?
Correct.
But that's not in place.
Well, I, I guess you're, you're right that it's not. We, we were informed that they, there would be an agreement to the thirty percent floor potentially. Um, so that, that's kind of how we ran these numbers for now.
Okay.
So would you be willing to run these numbers again without a thirty percent floor?
Yeah, we'd be, we'd be happy to do that.
You have the, you know, you already have the information. Okay.
I think that'd be super helpful.
And I mean, you know, you, I know you guys did it with the rules today, but you know, I guess we need the rules for next year. And the next year, you know, it's unknowns for two years, but next year we do know what Senate Bill One would be.
Sure. And, and I guess in the economic development agreements, there, there can be a floor that's, that's set, um, that we've seen. So you, you can't agree to a, uh, even if the company, you know, could depreciate to zero, you can, that we have seen where there can be a floor that's agreed to.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for Baker Tilly?
Yeah, I've got one. So the, just to clarify, the thirty percent floor was not picked because that's what was the, what was the floor, you know, back before July first, that was, that was picked because the preliminary possible agreements that were the thirty percent floors, use them numbers to base what it looked like off that. So to see the comparison between what it looks like with a thirty percent floor and a zero percent floor is what we're asked for. So if, if I understand right, that the sign is, I guess what I'm saying is that thirty percent floor wasn't a number that we just picked out of the sky and said, we're just going to do it the old way and ignore the new way.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yeah, we were indicated to run the, the analysis, assuming that thirty percent floor was still, still there. Correct. So we, correct, we didn't just choose that necessarily, right? And then we, but we'd be happy to, to run this analysis, assuming there was no floor. Correct.
Anybody else have any questions?
And Connor would be happy to run through the economic impact study if that's helpful.
Yeah, let's go for it.
All right. Um, well, the analysis was done using the E Plan Economic Modeling Software. And then data provided to us of the, the capex for estimated development and then some operational projections.
Hey Connor, just a minute, we're going to turn you down. You, you're really wild.
Apologies.
Yeah, just, we're going to turn you down.
Theater family, I project.
You're back on Connor.
Um, so another thing I use N Plan and as my modeling software and then data from Doral and things about, uh, estimated capex and development spending and then some operational projections.
This is our second meeting here. We apologize. We're still working on it. Just give us another, one more time, maybe or two. Okay, now maybe Nathan, try it again.
Uh, do I sound less obnoxious?
More down. Okay, speak again.
Uh, can you guys hear me in a comfortable way now?
Yeah, that's all right. Talk softly.
I'll, I'll stay away from the mic a bit. Um, so, uh, starting my analysis, there's some description on methodologies and things in pages two through four and the description of the project. But the analysis really starts on page five, in which I give some study highlights about, uh, the development construction phase and involving construction and installation of the solar facility within the fence and whatever other developments. Um, and, uh, so use funds estimated one point seven billion with economic output uh, from direct, indirect, and induced sources totaling out at two point one billion. So. Um, and, uh, a whole lot of jobs are projected, eight over, almost over eight hundred and, or eight thousand, six hundred jobs uh, estimated to be, uh, supported during the, uh, development phase. Um, and then, uh, as we said earlier, they're projecting twenty direct jobs for the new facility. Um.
Can I ask a question real quick? But the, uh, the, the twenty jobs that are supposed to be, uh, created, that was a number that was given to you or?
Yes, that was given to me. Uh, well, as estimated, um, median wage for them, which is, uh, part of how I measured labor income and economic output. Um, those twenty jobs are projected to stimulate through supply chain vendors and then induced in the community and another thirty four jobs annually. Uh, page six goes into an analysis, um, if that land had stayed just agricultural use, what kind of revenues that would, uh, generate? And then comparing that to what the same land would do with the new salaries. Um, so it's estimated to be a net loss of three direct jobs, but induced would create twenty seven additional jobs over what farm use would. And, uh, the largest difference being in economic output to the seller is estimated to produce an additional fifty point one million dollars in economic output annually. Uh, page seven goes into the construction more, uh, with more detailed information, showing direct and indirect induced employment. Uh, at the facility, it's estimated that there's while developing however long development phase takes, uh, just under, or just over, sorry, just under four thousand, nine hundred jobs. And then, and then additional through that whole supply chain and, uh, induced around that, uh, up to a total of eight thousand, six hundred and thirty six roughly, jobs are estimated to be created. Um, and then page eight, some, uh, similar thing done for annual operations of a solar facility, uh, showing, uh, yeah, to the eighty four total jobs supported. And there's a table of, uh, top twenty industry groups that, uh, are likely to be impacted by the solar operations. Uh, nine and ten go more into the measuring of, uh, what agricultural use for the land would be and showing again detailed outputs if the land and state agricultural use or will stay.
Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I do have a question, but I think gentlemen from the realm might be able to answer a little more. Um, kind of going back to the, to the, to the employment and all, uh, been questioned as to on the first, on the first, the first analysis, it was like, uh, when we did the first solar project, it was like there'd be two people employed in the county, just from here, there's twenty. Maybe go into a little bit of a, you know, just a quick snapshot of how a project like this, you know, what kind of employment and how it can also help stimulate or, or possibly not stimulate, whichever way it works, uh, you know, um, other investment, other growth, other, uh, dollars to account.
I'm not an expert economist here. Um, these Baker Tilly guys are the experts, I'm sure. But just from a practical standpoint, um, you know, the first thing we do is, you know, hire a staff technicians to continue to go out, monitor the network, interact with the grid, and then go out and basically fix things as they break within this large footprint. So we have already begun, uh, employing those people up in Stark County. Actually, our, our operations center is actually down here in Plaski County, um, our, uh, our, basically our warehouse. Um, but we have technicians that basically ride around, respond to, to issues, et cetera. As the project goes operational, we'll bring those people on. They'll work with the construction crew to get up to speed with the, uh, they'll be trained and bring, come up to speed with the operation of the, of all the equipment. And then they'll be hired, you know, there's, there's a certain number that kind of works with the number of megawatts and the number of panels. It's kind of a, a, a matrix that we use in coming up with the number of, uh, of employees. It's really a matter of how big the project is and how many people, how many panels can be monitored, um, during operation. So it's, it's very much of an accumulative thing. As it grows, we need additional staff. So you've got that additional staff, but also you have all sorts of other economic activities to maintain it because these folks aren't going to do everything. I mean, one of the biggest things, one of our biggest costs actually, is maintaining the inside of the facility, uh, cutting grass. You don't want grass and such growing up around the panels. Now, Ed here, Ed Baptista, has worked on a number of things with regard to agrivoltaics, things we are implementing up in Stark County right now, and will be implementing to greater degree down here in Plaski County that can bring not just technical workers to cut the grass, but agricultural members to take care of activities within that enclosed fence space. Number one, we have to take care of the ground. That's done with locals, cutting the grass. If we need heavy duty electrical work that's being done, these technicians are able to do some of the work, but oftentimes you need to engage technical folks, electricians to work on things that may break. You may need equipment to move equip, uh, things back and forth. Say if a, uh, inverter skid goes bad, we may need trucking to, to bring that in and out, electricians to install it, et cetera. Um, on top of that, there is just the fact that those people who are working here will also be, you know, either in the county or in adjacent counties would be, um, you know, living, you know, spending money here, et cetera. But there's, there's those activities. Um, there's also things like, you know, as the, as the roads degrade, uh, our, our access roads into each one of these facilities, gravel will be regraded. Those are all ongoing maintenance things that, that we have to pay for. Now, the nice thing about solar though is we don't have to pay for a input, um, carbon, you know, type of material. We don't have to pay for an energy source that comes free from the sun. So our operating costs are all with bodies on the ground. And that's where the economic benefit comes. We get paid for the electricity that we sell. That money comes back and gets paid, you know, either in economic development taxes or bodies on the ground to maintain our facilities. Because it's, we, we have the responsibility, both through our zoning requirements and the operation, to make sure that there's no issues with the operation of the equipment to maintain the facility in tip top shape. Some people will say, well, you may just let it go to seed. Um, that doesn't make sense when you put in one point seven billion dollars to generate electricity. You want, you want to take full advantage of that one point seven dot, seven billion dollars worth of investment, which means maintaining it to be tip top shape, so it gets the most energy from the sun that it sees, which basically for us is best because we can sell that power. The more electrons that we can move, the more energy we can sell, the better for us. So it's in our best interest to maintain these, and we do that through a, 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 a solid staff, technical staff, and supporting, uh, vendors take care of our, our facility. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I, I can add, uh, to that, that our, part of our corporate values, the way that we want to develop projects uh, includes this dual use of the land, which we are calling agrivoltaic. So right now, these analyses are not considering the amount of new jobs that can be part of the project just because we are hiring or we are going to, to hire young farmers to come inside the fence and do the vegetation management using sheep or pigs as a nice way to do, uh, vegetation management that is, that is going to preserve the soil for the future, is going to improve the soil quality, because we are not including any pesticides or herbicides just to keep the vegetation control nor mowing. So that's one of the things that, that we are doing for every single project we are, uh, working with right now. We are doing that in, in Stark County. But just to have a reference, a reference, um, we will need around three sheep per thousand acre to manage. If you want to do that, you will need a team of ten people just to do that, you know, one thousand acre management with three sheep per, uh, thousand acres. So that, that's a lot of people a thousand acres. You compare that to other farming practices, you can do that with one combined. So with, with dual use of the land, we are bringing more jobs into, into the solar system that is not being considered at all in these, um, analyses. Um, we're also going to allocate the small sections of land to allow uh, small farmers that does not have access to land or wants farm and have them farming different kind of crops inside the fence. So we are doing a lot of research with that. Partnering with Purdue University, we're having, uh, a research facility part of the project just to find out what the best crop would be in the future of dual use farming, farming the sun and farming the land. Yeah, and we are also working in, in an incubator program with, uh, one of our participating farmers. So right now we are investing in having some sheep, we're buying some sheep, so we are ready by the time that the project goes online, four, four thousand sheep ready to go in, inside the fence and start work.
So anybody have any more questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Before we do any voting or anything, we're going to have public comment. The rules, three minutes, be respectful, don't repeat yourself, everybody gets, or anybody wants to speak can have three minutes to speak. So who wants to be first? State your name and your address.
My name is Jason Kuchmay. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Snyder Morgan and Kuchmay, forty two eleven Clubview Drive in Fort Wayne. And I'm here tonight, I represent Connie Erlich. Uh, she owns real estate in Monroe Township. She's also a member of an LLC that owns real estate in Jefferson Township. So both of those are near those projects. Uh, again, I've got three minutes tonight, so when my personal time is up, I do have some others that'll just include my remarks for me. Uh, but just to begin, I did hand you each, each of you before the meeting began, a copy of, uh, Connie's written remonstrant pages there with the paper or the binder and the tabs. Um, I'm going to walk through that with you here a little bit tonight and ask you to hopefully deny the request of tax abatement. Starting with issue number two that I've identified on the, uh, tab there, uh, that addresses the issue of whether the real estate on which this solar project would be located qualifies as an economic revitalization era, area, or an ERA. Uh, that obviously is a prerequisite um, to a tax abatement, and real estate cannot properly be designated as an ERA just because the county wants to lure certain developments. The Knopf Fiber Glass case, that's Indiana Court of Appeals case that's cited in your materials there, that tells us that an ERA designation is intended for an area that is suffering from economic decline. Basically, a tax abatement is a, is a carrot to induce development on property that one would not otherwise develop, kind of like a brownfield. And I've included the statutory definition of an ERA right there on page one of your materials. Now first, the real estate must be undesirable for. Now, first, the real estate must be undesirable for or impossible of normal development and occupants. So not just undeveloped, like council said, but undesirable for or impossible of normal development. And then, and only then, if that is the case, the definition provides that those development problems must be for one of the reasons listed there, and all of those reasons are consistent with economic decline. You've not heard any evidence or statements regarding economic decline with respect to the property at issue here in this case. Instead, Mammoth seeks to develop a solar project on valuable and productive farmland, farmland that is not an economic decline, but instead is selling at a premium here in the county. And the land has been improved and developed for agricultural uses. So this Mammoth Solar Project land does not meet the definition of an ERA, frankly, and neither does Nathan Orger's property, as he was suggesting during the beginning. And Connie asked that you deny the request for a confirmatory resolution. And again, if the property can't be properly designated as an ERA, there can legally be no tax abatement. Issue number three in your written objections provides another reason for denial, and that relates to some improprieties with application and with the public notes.
Good times. Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment? State your name and address.
My name is Isaiah Tidwell. I'm from Winnemac, picking up where Jason left off. Exhibit three is the application filed for the ERA designation and tax abatement. Interestingly, it was filed by two entities, Mammoth Pastures LLC and Mammoth Grazing Lands LLC. The application was not filed until well after you granted the preliminary ERA designation, and notably, the request for the preliminary designation was requested by and approved for Mammoth grazing only. Mammoth Pastures did not request or secure the preliminary designation included at tab one. Not only that, but the public notice for tonight's meeting, which was published before the application was even filed, states that the request was made only by Mammoth Grazing, and tonight is to take the final action on Mammoth Grazing's request. Copy of the public notice is at tab two. Some other entity cannot throw its name on the application and secure tax abatement when it is not a part of the preliminary designation and was not identified as a party to the request in the public notice. There are issues with the application itself as well. As noted, the application reports to have been signed by Ed Baptista, but he did not sign in a representative capacity on behalf of either entity. There is no proper application before you. Not only was the application not properly signed, but since none of the Mammoth entities are the owner of the subject property, they are required to provide a copy of the lease or other evidence that the applicant has the right to operate on the real property. That was not provided, and again, these are the prerequisites to the ability to stand before you tonight. Issue number four is a very important legal issue. Tax abatement sought is not for real estate. It is being sought for the new manufacturing equipment only. Mammoth did not identify the equipment it specifically seeks the abatement for, just stating it will be for photovoltaic solar panel based electricity generating facilities. You cannot just say it is for the facility. The abatement is only available for new manufacturing equipment. Project fencing does not manufacture anything. Substations don't manufacture anything either. What does that leave? Panels, converters, cables, things of that nature? To the extent those are personal property, those are not new manufacturing equipment either. And if that is the case, there can be no tax abatement on those items either. New manufacturing equipment is defined by statute as tangible personal property that meets four requirements. One of those requirements requires the applicant to use the property in the direct production, manufacture, fabrication, assembly, extraction, mining, processing, refining, or finishing of other personal property, including but not limited to the disposal of solid waste or hazardous waste into energy or other useful products. In other words, new manufacturing equipment is tangible personal property used to make or manufacture other personal.
In other words, new manufacturing-
State your name and address, please.
Chris Brooker, Winnemac. Want my address?
That's what I said on the rules, but that's all right.
1945 North 300 West. In other words, new manufacturing equipment is tangible personal property used to make or manufacture other tangible personal property. Tangible personal property is not electricity. The written objections before you notes that property is a defined term in the tax abatement statute. In fact, the definition of property immediately follows the definition of new manufacturing equipment. And property means a building or structure, but not lands. And electricity is neither of those things. It is not tangible personal property as such, a tax abatement is not available. Issue number five in the written objections confirms that the Economic Development Commission did not reach a consensus and issued a no recommendation on the tax abatement. It confirms that the vice president of the EDC, Gilzler County, has already issued many abatements. And it notes that Nathan Orger recommended approval despite the position of the EDC as a whole, and it confirms that Mr. Orger's personal belief should be discounted as his parents have signed lease agreements with Mammoth Solar. Issue number six in the written objections raised other important issues about the tax abatement request as well. For example, nobody has yet seen an economic development agreement, let alone one approved by the commission. Without an EDA and without an understanding of the proposed payments to the county, you cannot properly evaluate the financial impact of the requested abatement. And now it is important to recite a statement for Dura's Group, the own 2022 annual report. Dura Group is Mammoth's parent company. In the annual report discussing prior Plaski County solar project, Dura stated, "The deal is for 20 years and is expected to save the company approximately $40 million in property tax, subject to minimum economic development payments through the deal period." In other words, the EDA is not a better deal for the county. Wrapping up, Connie also included in her objections, an article where a Ball State professor shared his thoughts on tax abatements in light of Indiana's new tax reforms in SEA1.
Your time's up. Thank you. Anybody else have any? Kurt, you're next. Kurt's next. How many more do you have?
That's it.
Okay, go for it then. Sorry.
Jamie Murray, Plaski County. He stated the legislation rendered tax abatements unusable and obsolete. Even stated that no rational mayor or county commission will again offer tax abatements, and that it would be spectacularly moronic to have a business come to town, use public services, and never pay a cent in taxes. These are the unbiased statements of a local university professor. The written objections also confirm that Baker Tilly used incorrect figures in discussing jobs to be lost from Mammoth Solar Project, resulting in misleading conclusions. A Michigan State University professor studied a solar project in Madison County and concluded the removal of 1,890 acres out of the agricultural production that would have direct, indirect, and induced effects in the county at that amount greater than $2 million per year. Now imagine that over 30 years or more. Finally, the written objections contain evidence that the solar project would cause a negative impact on neighboring property owners like Connie. For all these reasons and more fully discussed in the written objections, it is Connie's hope that you will do the right thing for the county and deny the confirmatory resolution, deny the request for a tax abate. Thank you.
Kurt, you're next.
Kurt, take you Winnemac.
So I want to express my support for the EDA. We have problems in our county like broadband, I've been passionate about trying to get money to go to help with broadband, healthcare issues, substance misuse, veterans' courts. I think revenue-
Just listen to uncertainty around the state. And giving a guarantee, some sort of economic wealth agreement, which I've just started listening to a lot of legal opinions. You guys will have to consider that, so I don't know how that plays out, but my support is revenue from the county- Lower taxes for people if you can get a social agreement. So I'm fully in support of negotiating. Right, you know, so I didn't even have a bribe either. So you don't even know what that is. But, you know.
Having worked on the broadband issue in Plaski County, it's a problem. I have a lot of people that shouldn't go to living where there is, and I could definitely put some money at the office to help that initiative. Thank you.
Punched out on my handy dandy time clock app so that I'm not speaking in county time. Nathan Orger, I live at 5355 West 400 South North Hudson. Just a couple of very quick ones. One, Kuchmay pointed out that when the council adopted the preliminary resolution, he had not yet received an application from the applicant. Look at guide for the program. It explicitly says, "I have what I deem to be sufficient information, I bring it to the council, and then I ask the EDC to convene," and the application has to be in or out of the EDC convenes. Our rules, which the council adopted on the recommendation of the EDC, do not require a completed application, or the council adopts a preliminary resolution, will need a confirmatory. Mr. Kuchmay made a reference to a particular case, NALF fiberglass case. In that case, the proxy issue was that NALF had received a tax bill after the project had been built, which very clearly demonstrates that it was not an area in need of redevelopment. This is not the case here. Project has not been built. They are following the process, so NALF is completely irrelevant. And finally, while I will not speak to legal questions where he may be correct regarding applicant name, that sort of thing, I would point out, given some of the concerns you raised, particular about whether the land is eligible for ERA designation, he and his client have lost three trial court cases, two court of appeals cases, and been denied appearance by the Supreme Court in two cases for this exact same thing. You have been, your decisions on other projects have been upheld, and so that is a scare tactic that you should not fear. ERA designation's been upheld, three different trial court judges, same court of appeals bank twice, and the Supreme Court has said, "No, we're not even taking this." Thank you.
And first of all, I want to thank you for your time. I'm sure by now you are so tired of public. So I just wanted to say why say yes to the abatement. Direct funds to the county without filtering state, and the county decides how to spend the money. Real estate property, real estate property will increase under the panels, and that will lower other people's taxes. This is an example. You guys are welcome to check numbers at the Stark County website where you see all the property taxes. There are three parcels that together are 144 acres under Dennis and Margarita Boe. And before solar 2023, this is what it was paid for property taxes, almost $3,000. 2025, after solar, $17,000. The difference is $14,500. It was a five, over 500% increase. And this agrees with the numbers that Mr. Oregon was talking about, the increase in money for property taxes. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know where this money goes, but I just know that it's an abundant amount of money. I don't understand why people in the community, they are just so against bringing money to the county that we really do. Thank you.
I'm standing here representing some neighbors that, my name is Dennis Boe, I live in Franklin Township, and I'm also representing two neighbors, Jerry and Marcia Olds, and Nancy and Monte Gumm. These are my neighbors. They don't want to come to the meetings. They don't like the, they don't like the, they don't like the friction that's happening. So we were doing the pledge of allegiance, and I'll be brief. I was just thinking of, you know, there should be like a constitution in here, and there should be like, but I was thinking that we, the people in Franklin Township, and I can't speak for every person there, but many of us in Franklin Township that have signed up for solar, would like the pursuit of happiness. We'd like the pursuit of having the solar project. Now, here we're talking about the actual taxation. I think all the things that they're coming against, I think this company will work everything out, line online, precept on precept. So I'm asking for the agreement of the tax abatement, the EDA, and that we might, those of us in Franklin Township who have signed up, we might be able to pursue happiness. Thank you for your time.
I'm Roger's, 5048 West 100 North Winnemac, and I've been there all my life. I have a neighbor who's deeply affected by your project. You were on one side of his property, and I believe you mentioned that if somebody's property is surrounded by solar, then they will get reimbursed some funds for that to make up for their loss in property value, and you do want to pursue happiness. So he was- You have your project here, this line here in BP right here. So he came to you, and he said, "What's going on here?" And you said, "That's BP, that's not me. I don't have responsibility for that." So I don't believe that they will take care of us. They may, they may take care of the county and give us money, but our property value is deeply hurt, and there won't be much to be said about that. There hasn't been anything really said about that from you guys, so that's my concern.
Thank you.
I'm Connie Nininger. I reside at 3129 North 400 White County. And as Nathan mentioned, you can make a declaratory resolution and a confirmatory resolution for an ERA without even a project being in the works. Many counties do that for economic development. And so according to the project that's before you today, economic development negotiations generally happen outside of the actual public meetings. Yes, they then have to publicize and bring it forward for a final vote, but the negotiation can be done in the executive session. And that's why it's important, you look at this as a negotiation process. And so as we think about what economic development really is, many people think it's just jobs. In a rural community, that is not true. There's so much more that has to take place. It's increasing the overall income of all the residents, and it's increasing the total assessed valuation. It's providing diverse jobs and a diverse mix. These are very important. So as you move this project, look at all aspects of it. So when we think about taxable abatement, an important point is, if an agreement is not issued, that does put the project at risk of even coming to the community. Many times we say, "No, we don't want to do this anymore," but in the economic development all across the state and across the country, many people think a tax abatement is there to ask. That's why most of that happening. But the one thing that doesn't include some of those tax abatement discussions are the economic development payments. That gives you statutory flexibility. If you're receiving tax revenue, as Jacob mentioned earlier, you know, there are statutory requirements as to how those can be spent. But with economic development, you have the flexibility. I want to share some of the ways other counties- And I want to share some of the ways other counties have used their economic development. In Benton County, they funded broadband, seventy-five percent of their residents from their economic development, from the wind. In Randolph County, they have wind and solar. They used two hundred ninety-eight thousand by new sheriff and E M T. They used three point two million dollars by new roads, sewer, water and bridges. At what they could have done if they had to increase taxes or process. Use one point four million dollars, new H backs in their courthouse. They didn't have to take out a loan or wait for those funds. And they provided four H members to every fifth grader in Randolph County.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope to, uh.
Is anybody other, more public comment?
I don't understand why they were to tax the way you're destroying the government. Roads are all the, I mean, it's dangerous, private, now they want to tax it. We already gave them one tax. Crazy. And our taxes, my taxes, and everybody, all you guys set up there, your taxes are going to go too because of giving this abatement. Our taxes are going to go up because somebody's got to make the difference up. But these new laws is coming in, roads and all this. I mean, somebody's got to cover that. And if they can make all the people that's living here all the time pay for that, then I mean, this is, it's not right what we're doing. It's something to really think about. It's not just my taxes that are going to go up. Everybody else's. Because if that tax abatement, that's what's going to happen.
Any other public comment?
My name is Harvey Gutwin, Francis. No. I think we'd all agree that solar is really inefficient energy. I am a cast. I mentioned it last night. Fifteen percent, but it's only efficiency of. For some months, it actually has a negative, takes some electricity to, to item out solar. But if it wasn't for government incentives, it wouldn't even be here. Now, you know, I don't think it, I don't think the. Table when, when the solar companies come in to, to get acres. After they got the acres, now they want the abatements. Now, I know most of the, most of the time those are over here. That's okay. And, and I can understand farmers, why, why you look at this. I don't blame you for looking at it. I understand you get a thousand dollars an acre. That's two hundred and fifty bucks in wind books. That's, that, I can understand why you look at it. But I'm, I'm looking down the road. Is this going to be good for five years, ten years, less than that? As the council, I think the council does all the budgeting, got something set aside to clear this land. You know, if you got thirty thousand acres of this in county, I'm no expert on demolition, but I do know it takes a lot to clean something up. And what are we going to do with that in however many years it is? I don't, maybe it'll be thirty. I really, personally, I don't think. I've got a couple notes. I'm not going to go over much of it, but, but, uh, we have phases that these are going to be around, solar companies are going to be around in business. The old English proverb, a bird in the hand worth two in the bush. That offers a warning. In other words, it encourages, encourages taking what is certain rather than gambling on a future uncertain outcome. They came here with loud abatements. Why do all the ones they need to bait us to continue on?
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Lawyer. One question I have is all of business conducted under L L C. Limited liability. If things go south, you will not recover anymore. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I've spent twenty years volunteering, organizing, working to strengthen Plaski County because I believe this community needs help. I'm not here to argue for or against solar. I'm here about transparency, accountability, responsible stewardship for our county's people. And tonight we face a weird decision. I myself, I would say I'm in the ballpark now of hundreds of hours of research just to try to understand it. And I still can't say that I fully do. But what I do understand is that all of the impact studies presented are commissioned or by the developer. And those are concerns about reliability and effectiveness. A fair decision requires a fully independent, public risk benefit analysis, not numbers provided from a private control firm hired by the applicant. Every claim about local jobs, income or community benefits should be verified and by true people experts. I also want to point out that the studies provided are later preliminary, unaudited and subject to change. The claim that this abatement E D A will also set Senate vote on related budget projections is misleading and doesn't withstand many hours of scrutiny. S B one by phasing out the creation initiation for over years will reduce property tax collection marginally. But if the county gives a twenty year abatement, it is actively changing to make that loss much, much worse by waiting all purpose of company, personal property taxes for two decades, and that would be self implemented. I am asking, that I see as justified reason for the next steps by our county council. And I am more than willing to share with all of the fact based research that I have conducted with multiple documents. I'm asking you to postpone this vote until public risk benefit analysis, not just a developer funded report. Provide full transparency about who profits pays, how the county will place the loss of general fund revenue, including appeals, landowners, companies, contracts or buyouts, local work, by property owners. Make the draft E D A public before any official. Open consensus, honestness about how the revenue affect every Plaski County resident, not just. These funds aren't replacement for general fund distribution. That is big. They can support some pretty big projects that they have in Plaski County. But they can't use our traditional pool funding. They can't increase our sheriffs, our.
Time, time is up. Thank you. No, 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 we're not, first, we're not going to go there. We're not going there. Dale, you're next.
Hey, old Pelsey. Salem Township, uh, Francis. I heard tonight, we're not here for a handout. Then why are we here? Let's think about it. Why are we here debating a tax abatement? Oh, you know, Nathan did a pretty good job of confusing the numbers. Lot of mumble jumble, but I'm going to give you some real numbers. I paid thirty dollars an acre prime farmland in, uh, this past year. And last year it was around twenty-one or twenty-two. And those are real numbers. Now, why in the world are we thinking about giving a tax abatement? We need their money. My family has been paying taxes on farmland for a hundred and twenty years. And I haven't stood around waiting for a handout and I'm not going to. They never have before. So that's my point. I'm trying to make, I think we need these tax dollars so that we can have a future here in Plaski County. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
How about us people that are living next to projects? No one is considering us and the significant decrease in our home values. How about the, nobody talks about this. How about the decrease in our crop yields due to the decrease in migration? So you guys are considering to give the corporate, the corporate guys a break, but your own residents. Hate to say but yours. Secondly, if we continue to give abatements to more, uh, more solar companies may come in and say, oh, Plaski County, bunch of fools will come in and again, apply for more abatements, more projects. We're already surrounded so bad. I mean, we've already signed enough land. I think I Googled this and figured it. Mile deep, all the way to Logan's Fort, actually far. And a lot of people that live in town, you guys don't have a grasp of how to pay. That's a lot of land. We really want to send an invite out for more. Nathan. Like in your opinion, um, is this, what do you think? Is this enough? And you said, yeah, in your opinion, the first project was enough. But I don't remember. So a lot of numbers and, and a lot of words were shared. And when it comes down to it, they just want you to trust, make it to the league. Well, they want you to trust them. And the way things went today, I mean, and the way they've been going, I think they deserve our trust.
Any more public comment? Couple more here.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Kniebel, Rich Grove Township. I'm here tonight as Plaski County Commissioner, representing a large number of my constituents in District One. I'm going to gloss over my speech because a lot of it has already been touched on. But I do want you guys to know as council members, this is not an either or decision to collect economic development payments or to collect taxes. Plaski County has the right to require that Mammoth Solar pay both, or at least a portion of both. Given the generous abatement council gave Mammoth in the first project, saving what Mammoth has, has stated to their investors was forty million dollars in taxes. I'm asking why as a council, you would continue to increase the burden on the residents of the county that you represent? There is a cost of doing business in any county, and that cost should not be borne by the taxpayers who have spent their lives here in Plaski County. President Trump just removed another seven point two billion in renewable subsidies. And hours ago, in a meeting with Canada, President Trump stated that if he hadn't stepped in to stop the Green New Deal, the country would have been destroyed. This was just today. If Trump was here tonight, and we are largely a Republican county, many of you state that you are Republican representatives. If he was here tonight, what action do you believe he would be taking? So we ask for what reason would our own Republican county leadership seek to destroy our own county? And many throughout our state are wondering the same thing. Seventy-two out of ninety-two counties are taking a much different path than what Plaski County has taken over the last five years. Do you believe we know something that seventy-two counties don't? Plaski County residents will be picking up the tab for any abatement given tonight to Mammoth Solar Grazing Land Project. And we have been taxed enough. Many members of Plaski County would greatly appreciate if the council would vote no to the tax abatement for the Mammoth Solar Grazing Project. And if there was ever a time for leadership in this county to take the, take back the driver's seat for its people, tonight is the night. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Huber. North. Family owns one of my courts. Way a hundred and fifty. I've never come to you guys and asked for twenty years, a hundred percent. That's foolish. If you would give me one tonight, I will build a glorious facility on thirty-five. Right here, right now. We bust our butt to make a dime. And I've got a hundred and fifty people, that means families, that are affected by it. You do this, that affects my workforce. Therefore, it affects my company. It trickles. Use your head. We all trusted you. We got behind you. We voted for you. You're sitting in the seats you are because of us. But pay attention.
Any more public comment?
My name is Alex Hashl. I live in Plaski County, Port Kiwana. Most of you know that I am a former county councilman of eight years. We have struggled for many, many years. We have struggled with our taxes. Our county cannot afford to give money away. When we have new businesses that come into our county, they know that they are going to be responsible for taxes. I am a homeowner. I am a property owner. I am a business owner. And I pay taxes expecting to be paying taxes because I know that that money goes back into our county. It pays for our M, our E M S, for our police department, for our school, for so many people who are affected by these tax abatement. Even small businesses have been, um, have not received a tax abatement. But yet we're giving a company that has come here and is taking so-called undesirable land, farmland. I am from a farm, farm family. And I understand that it can be desirable to the planet, that it can also be utilized. Unfortunately, we have not brought businesses in here who can actually turn around our community. It will destroy. It will destroy, but I don't see any businesses as of right now that are turning it around. We are losing people in our community. They're moving because of the solar. They are moving because you not have jobs that are available here. And without those taxes coming back into our community, we are going to be losing more jobs and losing more residents. Thank you.
Any more public comment? No more public comment. Public comments closed. I, you're, you're out of line, Joe. You, you, we've public comments closed.
Comment. It is reputed that there is two people, one for sure on your council as a conference.
That's not public comment. Yeah, it's closed. Thank you. Well, is there any board comment? Do you want to vote on anything? The E, the economic revitalization to do that. It looks like we need to go and have a, if we want to even get a number from Darrell to see what the number would be, we have to. Had that wrote down what that's called here. The economic revitalization area, you have to pass that before they're going to give us it, an, an economic development payment. So if we would pass an economic revitalization area, we could go and have a executive session to discuss with them the numbers. That's the only way that, that's the way it, right, Jacob? We have to have that, we could have an executive session. Yeah, but we don't want to just, we can't just discuss it in open meeting. It has to do with the company. I'm sure they don't want to discuss it in open meeting. Yes. You just can't vote on anything or finalize. Right, but we need to do the ERA first before they're even going to talk to us.
I don't think you have to. They may choose, but we, in the past, the order was a little bit different because we had a panel committee. But the negotiations occurred before the council adopted the resolution, so that it was one of us.
Oh, it's both together? Because before we didn't, we didn't do it that way before.
That's how we've done it on the previous meeting. EA has been incorporated by our council and you choose the resolution and done it all on our own. So if you table this until your next meeting or special meeting, so you have one week of negotiations, you can just. Do that or you can amend the language or flag that's incorporated instead of the 58 window that I built to the current language. And while negotiating and reach terms with which the majority of the council members are satisfied, then you can adopt the ERA resolution, the affirmative resolution. With EA incorporated at later.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to. To close this meeting. Request to convene an executive session so we can negotiate, which is under the requirements of an, of an executive session, all requirements. And then reconvene at a future date to. Take it public.
Okay. All right, here a second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Well, I have all kinds of discussions if I'm starting this conversation. I had it wrote down here. How about? We have executive session before our next meeting. We have a joint session that day. We could say meet at 3:30, 3 o'clock, because our meeting's at 5:00. And I already talked to Jake about this, you know, if this was legal or whatever. But we'd have to advertise that, then we could discuss with them, but we got to make sure they're available. So. If that's okay to be, to have that then. Has anybody else got a problem with at 3:00 before our Monday meeting? Whatever the next meeting is.
Is, yes.
Yeah.
I will, I will.
Okay. Would you be able to zoom it? Call in? Okay, because it's the executive session, you don't really have to, you know, we're no, we're not making a decision then. You're just going to listen and put input in. Well, that's just a discussion. Right.
Yeah, I, I guess the only thing for myself that I see with that is. I am out of town for that, which I can zoom in for meeting. I don't know that I can zoom in for an executive session. I don't know how, I'll leave that to a legal mind to let them know whether. Allow.
Well, yeah, that way you could, we, we, everybody's going to be there already.
That's fine. I just want to be sure. I'm not getting there. I don't need part of the conversation, but I'm leaving town tomorrow. I'm not really going to have any time showing up without you.
Okay. Can you zoom in?
Might we just set up an email and figure out a date? Or do you want to figure out a date right now?
We could set up an email and figure out a date for everybody. Is that all right?
Yeah, I would say that we, yeah, set it up, you know. You know, we, we need to figure out what the schedule is, make the post, when we're going to have the executive session. Next meeting.
Yeah, so we can negotiate with Darrell if we, then we might, if we don't want it, we just dies or we, whatever happens.
Yeah, I think still a few questions.
So can you restate your motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to. Table the resolution. Until we can convene an executive session. Negotiate with face with Darrell and those at the table. And then we will reschedule a new meeting to. Either accept or deny. Resolutions as of present.
And she looks like that motion.
Yeah.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, that's the discussion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Two, three opposed. Okay.
Who opposed?
Jeff.
No.
I'm, I'm an asset.
You're fine.
So do we? Close this meeting or do we?
Yeah, post public.
I think.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can't vote at a public hearing anyhow. We have to, we have to assess this, this meeting and reconvene in a general meeting to make any motions and stuff against us, so.
I'll, I'll, I'm going to ask Jacob, Jacob, can, can we close this meeting? Right now? This is a public hearing. Public hearing, this is a public hearing. Am I closing this meeting now or am I? We can, we're going to reconvene at a later date. Because if I reconvene at a later date, I don't have to ask time, correct?
Yeah.
So we're going to adjourn this, this public. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing. I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Anybody want to second it? I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about? Adjournment? Meeting's adjourned.